December third meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order. The first case we had on the agenda tonight has been rescheduled or postponed to December 17th due to an incorrect legal notice, and that's being republished again.
I guess we're not on.
On that one, so that's all I'll say for that. I don't believe there's anybody here for that case, case number 1513. As I say, will be postponed until December 17th on that. Next case on the agenda tonight is case number 1514. On the petition of AOB Engineering who seeks a variance from the sign regulations in order to put in LED signs at their gas station on the property located 87 Walkers Brook Drive, Redding, Massachusetts. I believe they're here tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Let me go ahead and read the legal notice and sway you in, and then we can proceed on that. Okay. Legal notice. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing in the selectmen's meeting room at Town Hall, 16 Lowell Street, Redding, Massachusetts on Thursday, December 3rd, 2015 at 7:00 PM. On the petition of AOB Engineering who seeks a variance from the sign regulations, section 8.0, in order to modify freestanding signs, a freestanding sign, to include LED lighting and add LED pump topper signs to the gas pumps, add a canopy sign illuminated on the property located at 87 Walkers Brook Drive, Redding, Massachusetts. Unless there's an objection, I will dispense with the reading of the abutters list, except to say that the abutters were notified, as were the following: border selectmen, town clerk, police department, fire department, building department, conservation commission, health department, assessors office, engineering division, CPDC, members and associate members of the board of appeals, as well as the planning boards of Wakefield, Linfield, North Redding, Stonemont, Woburn, and Wilmington. Testimony given before this board is taken under oath. So if you think you may want to speak tonight, please stand, raise your right hand, and I'll administer the oath. So if anybody's going to speak on behalf of this, okay? I swear that the testimony given by me before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, as I do.
I do.
Okay, thank you. If you would like to present your case, identify yourself and present your case, yeah.
My name is Steve Pedro with AOB Engineering. On behalf of my client, Maria Energy, representing the Shell Station, 87 Walkers Brook Road. What we're looking to do is Shell is looking to upgrade some of the signage at that location. The upgrades include modification to the existing freestanding sign to include LED price panels. The norm in the industry now is that these price panel, uh, price signs are no longer the placards that get manually installed. It goes to a computerized system that the attendant is able to change the price at the console. I guess it's costly in terms of maintaining the placards, they get damaged, and also safety concern of having attendants go out in bad weather and dealing with the placards falling off and coming down. So, one is the freestanding sign modification. In conjunction with that, the price sign, the pump toppers, state law requires the price be shown above the dispensers. Again, instead of going back with little magnetic stickers and changing the price, it's done, again, from the console, the attendant's able to change all the prices without going out into the elements. And then the third aspect of it is the canopy. Shell is looking to modify, improve the canopy by installing a couple of logos, Shell logos on either side of the canopy, and also a illuminated red band along the facade of the canopy, which would also backlight the yellow facade. We've been before the CDPC regarding an alteration or modification to a signage plan, and they concurred with the modifications to the price sign, modifications of the LED price toppers, pump toppers. They did not approve the canopy modifications, the internally illuminated red band or the logos. Should this board support their denial, I just asked that if the variance be sort of separate, where it's not all or nothing, where we're able to say we can modify the ID sign as a variance, include the pump toppers, and keep the canopy as a separate variance request. Just briefly, that's the scope of the work. We try to, what we think is we're in general conformance or not compliance, but conformance with the intent of the bylaw of minimal signage. We know, you know, the illumination of the canopy, building department considered that all a sign, so then you're looking at an excessive size, sign, as the canopy. But we think it's not a beacon, it's more of a, just a soft glow to give some dimension, you know, to the canopy as you're driving up. It's not a dark aside, so it's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, we did have a comment from the building inspector, Glenn Redman, who sent a memo, and it's in the case file. I will go ahead and, it's a short little memo that he did, and I will read that. Glenn noted, "This application is a request to install LED sign on the freestanding sign that's already in place, four LED pump signs, and to install a canopy sign with an illuminated red bar and yellow band. LED signs are not allowed. The four pump signs are additional signs not allowed and are LED lighting. In addition, it is my opinion," that's Glenn, "that this proposal of the canopy alterations is in fact an additional sign and not allowed by our zoning bylaws." Thank you, Glenn Redman, zoning officer, town of Red. And also, I think you got new packets, came later, you got new packet tonight, the certificate of appropriateness from CPDC, and I think the gentleman was correct in noting, you know, what CPDC approved back in September on this. The, I say, see, it's in the certificate that they approved the LED lighting on the purpose and on the freestanding sign, but not on the canopy. David, any questions, comments on this?
Yeah, I have a couple, or maybe a few, depending upon the answers to the first one. So, the first one is more procedural in nature, and that is, the certificate of appropriateness was granted to an applicant named 87 Walkers Brook Drive LLC. And your application is on behalf of Maria Energy. How are those, are those related corporations?
Well, 87 Walkers Brook LLC is the owners of the property.
Owner and operator.
Owner and operator. This is Mr. Rick Kamusow. He's the owner, operator of the, of the location. Maria is the supplier of gasoline, Shell gasoline, and a part of their agreement is that they are responsible for these sort of improvements. They're looking to replace some dispensers and do the signage modifications where we're here before you. They've hired us to permit that, to go through the various boards. So they are technically our clients, or the applicant.
Right, so, if I can just simplify it a little bit, Maria Energy would be like the franchisor in this scenario?
I guess you almost could say they're an entity that is on the same.
All right, and just because of the agreement with the owner operator, the agreement states that, or the agreement provides that Maria would, will apply for and be responsible for this type of scenario, okay?
Right, obtaining the permits to do the improvements.
And so because the, because a variance runs with the property, we would, should the board be inclined to issue the variance, it would have to be issued to the LLC, who's the owner of the property? And does that make a difference to you?
That does not make a difference.
All right. So it appears the engineering firm is here representing on behalf of the real party and interest.
What then is the official representation of the LLC? What is their actual name, legal name?
87 Walkers Brook Drive LLC.
Oh, LLC. Yeah, that's what it says here in the application.
And that's in the certificate of appropriateness issued by CPDC.
And basically said that was AOB Engineering was acting as their regions.
Right, right, right.
In the application anyway.
Yeah, and, and just to be, just to be clear on the premises on the record.
Nope, that's good, yeah, thank you.
Second is the pump toppers. All they have is the price of gasoline, they don't flash what's for sale inside or anything like that?
No.
Do they flash at all?
They don't. They're similar to the price panel on the ID sign. The only time they will change is when the price of the gasoline product actually changes from the console, so that's, you know, once, I don't know.
All right, and just looking through the notes from CPDC and the plans and from what Glenn had to say, is there any issue with regard to the heightened dimensions of the standalone sign?
There was a discussion with the CDPC regarding that, and in talking with the building inspector, he identified that the existing sign is what he considers a existing non-conforming structure. The improvements we're doing does not create any.
New nonconformity?
Exactly.
Going to be within the same dimensions as the current nonconforming sign?
That's, that's correct. So he did not even ask us to try to get a variance, and after the fact variance, because he says, you know, it's, it's an existing nonconforming condition. We're not making it any worse, so, you know, he requests what we require.
I mean, you know, LED is, is the standard.
Now in the industry.
And, you know, the bylaw is a little bit behind that, the times on that. I know that the bylaw is due to be updated. We never got to it as part of our update, but I'm hopeful that by the time it comes up for updating, which I guess will be in a year from now, by the time it gets in front of the body of town meeting, that they'll bring it forward into the present. But that's not the only part of your application. Are there any safety reasons why you're applying for, I'm talking about the canopy alteration? Are there any safety reasons for having that Shell sign or the reflective paint on the border of it?
The only safety aspect of it is to identify the canopy of the site as a Shell location from, you know, a distance that saves somebody to decide to make the turn into the station as opposed to, you know, trying to see other signage. Right now, there's no signage on the canopy, so that's pretty much the only safety aspect of the signage on the canopy and the illumination, that it does give the motoring public at night the ability to be able to spot the services.
And that's, well, does the applicant feel that the Pectin sign panel is not sufficient enough to alert motorists to the fact that you're a Shell station? I drive by it all the time.
Yeah. Again, too.
I, I understand, I'm just, I'm not trying to be smart with you, I'm just trying to, trying to figure out a way that, trying to figure out the reasoning for it, basically. That's all I have for now.
Okay. Thank you. And this is a variance. I didn't ask you when you made your presentation, maybe after we get through questioning you, you could go through your variance criteria on that, or maybe, maybe we should do it first? John, are you interested in that? That's, I would bow to you next with questions.
Either way, I think we need to get through that process.
Yeah, and why don't you go through that, your variance criteria, there are those four criteria that you have to meet for variance?
The first one is describe the circumstances related to the soil conditions, shape, topography, which affect the land or structure in question.
Right.
What happens is the ID sign, the freestanding ID sign is on a significant slope. Right now, there's, I don't know, maybe a five-foot difference between high and low. And because of that significant slope, they installed a metal platform, level platform, so that the attendant could safely, safely change the price without being on the, on level ground. In terms of the LED lighting of that, I mean, it's, the site, we're trying to provide notification or price notification, which is one of the major items in terms of a lot of people pulling into a station, what's the price of the gas, and not slowing down at the entry and trying to find out what the price is before they make the decision. It's easily recognizable, it's a good price or a good product, and people make the decision to safely pull into the station without undue problems. The enforcement of the provisions, literal enforcement, again, LED is not allowed, but literally, it may be an outdated bylaw. A lot of towns now are changing it. I've been before many boards because the same thing. They didn't want reader boards, these message boards that scroll with LED messages, but these price signs are not that. It's purely a safety issue and being able to keep the tenants in the, in the building without coming out in climate weather and bad conditions. The hardship, both hardships, we continue to have to have our attendants go out to the site, change the price panels, it's dangerous, it's walking across the, you know, the travel lanes of the gasoline customers, so it's, it would be less safe to our attendants and to the motoring public. Granting the relief, I don't think nullifies or derogates from the intent of the bylaw. I think it's a, we've submitted a minimal signage package. I think even the CDPC agrees on the LED signage aspect of it, the pricing panel aspect of it, and we know they, they don't recommend or they did not approve the lighting of the canopy and the additional two logos on the canopy. Again, we felt it was a somewhat of a restrictive sign package, but they think otherwise, and should this board also support their findings or their position? As I said, if we could separate that from the rest of the requested variance for LED, I'd be most grateful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
John, would you like to, well, is the Dunkin' Donuts signage at present the same as it would be on the new sign?
I believe it is. The panel size is the same.
So that hasn't really changed?
That has not changed.
You have a larger signage for the price of the regular gas.
That's correct.
And that's going to be in red?
That's correct.
And the diesel is going to be in green?
Correct.
But in smaller size?
Correct.
So now you have four different colors on your signage. Could you tell me what the number lumens or what the illumination is?
The lumens for the, for the signage, I don't have actual lumen numbers. The, the sign system itself has a sensor where in bright daylight, it would tend to increase in output, and it is a sort of a tinted facade to it so that you can read it during the day. And then at night, the ambient light, the sensor would dim the LED lighting, so you have the same intensity during the day that you would at night. Again, it's not a glaring LED, it's background light, and I'm sure you've seen it on other stations, it's not a spotlight effect.
I think that they have come in with a degree of, degree of brightness, I guess, during the daylight versus the night time hours.
That's correct.
And what might be slightly different in your station is your hours. What are your hours of operation?
Twenty-four hours a day.
And that's what I'm talking about. I don't think there's any other station here that's open twenty-four hours a day. So the big question to me is, is that a distraction or a negative safety factor if the lumens don't drop down to a certain level? I don't know what that level might be.
In terms of the nighttime intensity, the sensor just identifies ambient light or darkness, it doesn't matter if it's five o'clock winter night or two o'clock in the morning, it's the same sort of intensity. And again, I don't think the nighttime LED price panels have been objectionable in intensity throughout other communities, and I don't expect it to be objectionable to this community at twenty-four hours in that, in that area.
I was thinking more of the traffic along 128, especially during the winter hours, where it could be a distraction, but I don't know what the safety aspect of it, where it shines, basically. I mean, your, your freestanding sign is high enough that it is observable even before you get off the highway. I don't know about the, the rest of it. I just asked that question, I don't have the answers, and I don't get to the reading.
All I could say is that, again, the existing, the proposed modifications, we're not making the sign any higher, it already has internal illumination.
Right.
The LED aspect of the sign, it's not increasing the, the.
The lighting effect anymore than, than what is there right now?
Right, it's purely just a, another method of providing the light that can be controlled in terms of changing the price. That's the only way to do it, is with the LED. The bylaw's technical description saying LED is, is not allowed.
Yeah, it doesn't, I mean.
So it's not like it's a whole different light level. It's the same sort of light level in terms of being readability, it's not a beacon, it's just a different method of the same intensity.
So should that be a problem, and is brought up to you by the building inspector or somebody else, that could be adjustable?
That's correct. Should that be a problem, there is adjustments that can be made to the, to the output.
Okay, and there is no additional signage on the building?
No additional sign. There is an existing sign there that I think the CDPC had mentioned, I think it's a Dunkin' Donuts sign.
Mm-hmm.
So that's going to be remaining, we're not doing anything to that.
And you split the request. I take it from hearing you.
Yes.
To break it into two parts. One is for the LED signage, and the other one is for the canopy illumination?
And signage, correct. Just in terms of the board's vote, I didn't want it to be all lumped into one, all or nothing. We know that the CDPC.
I think we could put a condition, basically, when we make our decision on it, if we had to.
Yeah. I go along with David. We've done how many of these already?
Yeah.
As long as they are consistent within the town, I don't have a problem.
Right, I know coming in on 28, there's the new, the merit station just has it, I think the mobile station has it coming down, 28. Merit obviously is very close to 128.
Mutual.
Yeah, mutual, I'm sorry, mutual, right. Very close to 128, and we just had the Shell station, oh, that was Gulf, Gulf I believe up on Main Street here.
Yes, it is, Gulf, no.
It's a Gulf down.
It was Shell.
Used to be Shell, yeah. But that hasn't happened yet, where we just, yeah, it hasn't happened. Yeah. No, you're right, it depends, there are four of them here.
And also have the one down at, Couple and Farms down at the Rotary, which we just gave.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's, that's a Gulf, yeah. Couple and Farms, the road, we're going to say, yeah, all right.
Can I sit with you a second?
Question?
That's the only comment that I have.
Yeah. Si, questions?
I thought I heard you in your opening comments when you made your presentation, talking about the canopy, that you said a couple of Shell signs on the canopy.
Right, the, the original proposal was each side of the canopy to have these logos, so it'd be two, getting approach.
Yeah, okay.
Each corner of it. So that, drive on, one way to be able to see.
Yep, I see it now, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
This is probably a point of clarification for me or gaining knowledge here, but I noticed on one of your pump displays, you got three, three alphanumeric displays.
Yes.
For regular plus and V power, and then on the other one, you got four.
Right, that's a diesel.
Which is regular plus plus.
Well, it's really not regular plus.
And diesel, so I just explained the diff, what's the difference here?
Yeah, there's one dispenser on each of the islands that has essentially the four products, regular, plus, V power, and diesel.
Oh.
So it's, it's not plus plus, it's really V power.
Supposed to be V power.
Yeah, correct.
All right, okay. Like everyone else has said, we've done this several times in town already, and it seems to be the way to go, and it's probably going to probably hear a lot more of these kinds of things coming down the pike. I was trying to rationalize why you needed more logos on the canopy, unless it was, in my mind, was trying to get the attention of traffic on 12895, because the position of that logo on the canopy is not that far away from the freestanding sign logo. I mean, they're not very far away. And I always said to myself, it probably looks better with one than it does with two, okay? So I was really trying to search for why you were really doing that, okay? Unless there's a standardization on the part of Shell, they're trying to do all their canopies the same way.
I'll tell you, that is the, the actual reason for the two logos on the canopy. Their standard is.
That's what I figured, yeah.
Though it's difficult to identify that as a.
And I'm trying to picture the illumination of the canopy itself, the line illumination all the way along. That's a good-sized canopy. That illumination is going to be very attention-getting, I think.
Again, it's, the intensity of the light isn't that great. It's, there's a red bar, a Lexan bar that has lighting within it that has a glow to it, and then it has a sort of a backwash to the yellow. It's not a high glare lighting, it's, again, a standard that other Shell canopies have utilized.
And I know there was some question raised somewhere, that those logos on the canopy are basically someone, people might consider that as another second freestanding sign. I don't, in my mind, I don't consider it a freestanding sign.
Yeah, I think the building inspector considered them.
It's more a marquee sign than it is a freestanding sign.
I think the building inspector's position was it additional wall signs, which were not allowed, so we would need to get a variance for the number of wall signs, which included.
I'm kind of in concert with the guys so far that have spoken, that the LEDs on the toppers, LEDs on the freestanding sign, I have a problem with that, okay? I'm not as convinced in my own mind about the canopy and the additional logo signs. I'll leave it there for the moment.
Eric, comments?
Well, it's consistent with what we usually see with these things.
Well, it's consistent with what we usually see with these things. Um, I'm actually not opposed to the canopy provision, given that it is in a, uh, land or development industrial area of town and every other, um, gas station that we've dealt with has one. I mean, we just brought up the, um, the mutual case that we had, nearly identical. And I think that what's nice about this is this is really industrial order, so I actually don't have a problem with this.
I mean, you're on the mutual though, I think it's just painted, there's no illumination on it.
It's painted, it's not lit.
Where this is requiring a, it's lit.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I'm not sure. I feel like, uh, you're-
The only thing in my mind that I recall that's different between that, the, the canopy is not lit, I'm pretty sure of that.
I'm positive of that.
And there's no, there's no, I don't think there's a logo on there either.
But I don't think there's no logo.
The only thing different about that one than some of the other things we've seen is that the pump toppers do have changing signage.
They do.
Huh?
On the, uh-
Mutual? You have the LED prices and right above it, you have changing signage.
Hmm.
Credit to cash, cash to credit, credit to cash. It's a changing sign. It's the only difference between that and some of the others. Okay? So somewhere along the way, we approved that, that, we didn't really-
I think that, that was a split vote.
Huh?
I think that was a split vote.
You think so? Okay. So I don't think there's a precedent for the canopy light.
We, we were asked for the same thing down at Cumberland on the, at, at the Rotary.
Right.
Which we denied.
Might have to go back and revisit the decision on that one, right? Cause I can't recall it. We, if we knew that they were gonna be changing, you know, every two or three seconds, I can't believe we would have done that, but-
Talking about mutuals?
Yeah.
Yeah, you could try by there, it does change.
I did not realize that.
As a credit for the price and then cash price. The, the, the price changes.
Well-
Nothing further, Eric, okay?
But I, I guess the only difference with that, who sigh, is it's not advertising milk.
Right.
It's still the pump topper that's advertising the price of gas.
Right.
And just that the price has changed, whether it's cash-
Credit to cash, credit to cash, yeah.
And I, and I think the, the changing sign, you know, the ticker tape type LED is the thing that we were trying to get away from where it's advertising the price of a gallon of milk or groceries that they might sell inside.
If you go over to the Cumberland and Wakefield-
Yeah.
They have the changing-
Correct.
-sign. And if I recall, I think it says member-
Member.
Non-member.
Ah.
That's the flicking there. They're not advertising it. Also the, a member price, non-member price, so-
Yeah.
It's the same thing as mutual except it's just two different words.
Yeah, it's kinda quirky that five hundred feet of geography change is what you can do.
Anyway. Okay.
Yeah. Well, uh, well, one of the questions I had was what the hours of operation were gonna be. So this, this is a unit that's twenty-four seven on that, uh, on it and I, I would agree with maybe some of the comments you heard here from other members of the board that I, I don't have an issue with the, uh, the freestanding sign putting an LED, uh, price on that or the pump toppers seeing that the pump toppers have to display a price anyway. I mean, that's state law, whether they be LED, even, you know, supposedly any price Glenn would consider that would be a sign, but it's, it's state law that's required on top of the pump, so. That is something that's required. The canopy, I, we, we have not allowed one yet in town and whether we are waiting for a revision of the bylaws, so be it. If the bylaws change, that's the way it will be. But right now, I think we've held off on doing any lighting of the canopies and I, I would prefer not to myself, uh, have any logo up there, lighting or anything else. You could paint it, obviously the yellow paint, the, sure, the shell color is yellow, red, but any lighting I would be opposed to on that. Uh, so no further comments from board members, I can open this up for public comment and is there anybody from here from the public who would like to speak? I have sworn you in. So, uh-
Let me, uh, go ahead and-
Uh, testimony given before the board is taken under oath, so if you think you may wanna speak, please stand and raise your right hand. I swear the testimony given before me, before the board, will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth. I will. Okay.
Uh, state your name and address, please.
Tony Dresel, one thirty John Street.
Okay.
Uh, yes, I would like to address the, uh, this canopy.
Okay.
One of the issues with granting a variance for a canopy lighting is that, uh, once one gas station has it, even if they are further away from residential, um, areas, then others will ask for it also. And one of the reasons why CPDC has been reluctant to grant it is because I believe the last few that have requested it, uh, the mobile on Main Street at the corner of, is it West, West Street?
Uh, Summer, I-
Summer, yes.
Yeah, coming down, Summer.
Yeah, they had requested it and the mobile over by, um, Franklin and Main Street had also requested it. And the problem becomes, once again, once you let one have it, now others are looking for it and they have, uh, closer to residential. Also, um, the, I'd like to address a comment by Mr. Haxstrom, that while the area is a PU DI, the applicant has never requested PU DI status. So even though it's an overlay district, you cannot use the PU, PU DI, uh, rules unless they actually apply for PU, PU DI status. Check the bylaw, it's an either or, it's not a both.
Mm-hmm.
And finally, I would ask that the board review their mutual gas station decision to see if they actually granted a variance for what would be considered an animated sign, any sign that changes, uh, the message more than eight times a day by, by law. My guess is the board did not and that the applicant simply took advantage of, um, of the LED sign to make that change. And I do have a question for the applicant. Uh, the reference was that the only time the price on the, um, pump, pump tops would change is when the price changes. As a Shell station, I believe they're part of the Stop &amp; Shop gasoline network where you can get a discount on your gasoline using your Stop &amp; Shop card.
Mm-hmm.
So would the price change when somebody is doing so and getting their discount? Or would it remain at the standard rate? Thank you.
All right, would you, do you, could you respond to that? I don't know.
Yeah, the, the display will not change. What happens is the, uh, reduction in price-
Yes.
-is, is shown in the, the screen there.
In the screen on the electronic pump.
Thirty cent discount or something.
Yeah, it rolls back the price, uh, like we pick up the nozzle where you see-
You'll see that the, the, the price changes, right?
On, on the pump display but not on the top?
That's cool.
Yes. Okay, thank you, yep.
That is all.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Uh, any further questions from the public? If not, I will close the public portion of the meeting. Uh, any further comments from board members on this? Uh, I will note in, in, in the, the comment from the public brought up a point that, uh, I was down to Town Hall earlier this week as I was curious in that I knew this was a special area down here and I had asked for what was approved back when, when that station first went in and they did not know. They can't find the files on it, that's, they said, oh, it's so old, we don't have it. And it's so old. Seems like it's been what, fifteen, sixteen years maybe, that's all, but, uh, they were saying they couldn't find the original application for, you know, the, in the plan for that file, uh, for that station down there, uh, on it. That's all I can say on that, uh, anyway.
Now, wasn't originally a Shell station though, was it?
Uh, I don't know if it originally was.
Probably a Texan.
Probably back when, yeah. Again, this was all put in when obviously the Home Depot went in, uh, Jordans, even before then probably, it was one of the first one.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I've been at my address of one thirty John Street for over twenty years.
You probably know better than we do, yes.
And, yes, the, uh, the Shell station, a gas station was there even before I moved in, so it was well before the Home Depot and stuff.
Okay.
Matter of fact, I believe it was probably even before that because there was the, uh, there used to be an Exxon right across from my house, it's now East Salem Five.
Okay.
And I wanna say that even goes back to nineteen seventies at least.
Yeah. Okay. So a, anyway, the, the shot of it was that they couldn't find the original application and, and things on that and-
That's rare.
Yeah, that's rare. But, uh, any further comments, uh, from board members? Anybody? If not, I would entertain a motion on this particular case.
Well, maybe we'll let the lawyers off the hook with their urine stuff.
Okay.
Uh, I would move to grant the petitioner, IU, IU?
IU.
IU. Engineering, uh, agent four eighty-seven Walker Brook Road.
LLC.
LLC.
Yeah.
A variance from section eight, I guess I'll use the total.
Yeah.
Section eight point oh. Uh, of the zoning bylaw, in order to modify an existing freestanding sign, to include LED signage, add LED pump topper signs. And I don't know how we wanna handle, wanna handle the canopy separately? Uh, make the motion to include that as well?
Uh-
It, uh-
Unless you reword the, uh-
Hmm?
Unless you reword it a little bit. Asking the board, that the board heard the request, um, of one eighty-seven or eighty-seven, was it?
Yeah.
One eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven, offers for pride LLC. And I think you wanna reverse that too. Because you're awarding the, uh, granted permit to eighty-seven, uh, Walker's Book Pride LLC with the agent.
I think, I think you could note that it's like, the variance consists of three requests.
Yep.
One being the freestanding sign, one being the pump top, is one being the canopy and then we could-
Vote on all three? Vote on three separately?
Vote on all three separate. Well, but write it up as one.
Well, right, I think you're right.
Or you could make your motion however you see, that, you know, how you would vote or something and-
Or you could make three separate motions.
Yeah.
I know that's a lot of oxygen.
Yeah, I tend to try to keep it cleaner than that. I, I would-
I know CPDC, they just included it as, you know, in their decision at the end, they just noted, we approved this, we approved this, we disapproved this.
Hmm. Okay, I guess I, I would probably make the motion to go through the, grant the petitioner, et cetera, et cetera, uh, under a variance under section three in order to accomplish three separate requests, or-
Mm-hmm.
One being to modify the existing freestanding sign to include LED signage. Secondly, to add LED pump topper signs. And three, to add an illuminated canopy sign on the property located at eighty-seven Walker Brook Road. The changes would be as shown on sign plan SG dash one, canopy elevations SG dash two, and proposed site signage SD dash three. All prepared by IU Engineering, address such and such, four eighty, for Noria Engineering, or Energy Corporation. All documents dated with revisions through nine thirty fifteen.
Right.
We need to say anything else?
Well, you wanna, we wanna indicate what the, uh, decision of the board was.
Excuse me?
You wanna indicate what the decision of the board was.
I can't hear you.
You wanna indicate what the decision of the board was in the three parts.
Yeah.
Yeah, the board then approved.
I think we, yeah, we'll go through the three parts.
We'll go through the three parts and then-
We'll go through the three parts, vote on that and then write it up as one decision.
Write it up as one decision.
Of that.
I think that would be okay.
So, pot one would be the freestanding sign, approval of an LED pricing, uh, shown on the freestanding sign.
So we're gonna vote on three separately?
We'll vote on each part separately.
Which one separately?
But write it up as one decision.
And we'll write, if there's a difference in one versus the other versus the other, then we'll write them up that way. If they're, if they're all approved-
Right.
Then we'd write them up as a, as consolidated.
Wonderful, I second that.
Before all unanimous, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, wonderful, I second that. Seconded by David. Okay. Uh, all those in favor of, let's, let's take the first, uh-
The first one would be to-
The first request being the, uh, LED price lighting on the freestanding sign. All those in favor, uh, please indicate, raise your right hand. Thank you. So that's passed. Uh, the next one, with that note five zero zero, passed. And the next one would be the LED lighting on the-
Pump toppers.
On the pump toppers.
Right.
Pump toppers have an LED lighting. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And the next, uh, request was for, uh, signage and an illumination, uh, lit signage and illumination on the-
Canopy.
-canopy. Uh, all those in favor, uh, raise your right hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Let it be shown, uh, that's zero zero five, uh-
Zero five.
Zero five zero on that one request.
Now, do you wanna, did you wanna add in there subject to adjustment of the illumination of, by the, uh, the town officials?
You mean with the pump toppers or with the?
No.
Both freestanding?
Right, freestanding.
Standing. Okay, all right, we could do that.
That's all right.
Yep.
Okay, so basically what we do is we have an approval for, uh, sign plan SG one, but not an approval for SG two or SG three. Okay? The pump toppers and the freestanding sign is shown on SG dash one.
Yep.
And that's approved. So, uh, oh, I don't have the-
Oh, I get it.
Scan. Let me, I'll stamp the, uh, this plan here, SG one, and we can give you that, uh, tonight.
Just a quick question, is there an appeal period that has to expire before the-
Yes, there is, yes. Uh, we, we have a certain, uh, we try to get the decision written up within, uh, fourteen days. Usually it's, it's before that. And then after that, there's a twenty day, we file that with the town clerk and then there's a twenty day appeal period from about as on that.
Okay.
The only thing I would, the other comment I would make too is that, you know, as David said, the bylaws are gonna take a look at signage bylaws-
Right.
-somewhere down the road. That may result in your ability to change canopy configurations at some point. You need to look at that perhaps and if-
I'm sure.
It becomes an allowed thing, then you're-
It does change.
You can always come back.
We'll take a look.
You'll be on top of it.
That's right.
I'm sure.
Okay, I think this covers that, the plan, okay? So we just approved basically-
Is that in me?
Yeah, just, uh, just plan SG one was approved. The other two plans, we do not approve. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for the time and attention. Specifically, thank you, Sheriff Ashwell.
Yeah.
Get well soon.
We're not going near them, though, you know.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, thank you.
Let's see here. Let me, that plan here, and Yeah. Okay. Si, will you write that up?
I'll have to, I'll do it tomorrow, because I'll forget all damn things by Saturday.
Well, thank you.
Thank you again. Good night.
Okay. And 1514. Okay, I do not believe we have any other business here before the board tonight. I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second? John second. All those in favor? Thank you very much. Next meeting will be December 17.
So, Robert, maybe before that meeting, we'll touch base?
Yes.
If the board's going to have five minutes